Student recognition ceremony. We're very pleased that you're here this evening. We assume that you're here for the student recognition and not that all of you came for the school board meeting, but you'll be welcome to stay afterwards. Let me give you a little bit of a picture of what we're doing this evening. Today, we have two wonderful groups of students, both of whom have accomplished themselves in the sport of bowling, our Unified Bears Bowling Team and our Varsity Bowling Team. The students this evening received from our school board members something that you can only receive if you come here. First of all, Board Chair Janet Newberg, show the official certificate. That's fine, that's fine. Each of the students too. My left, your right will receive a personalized certificate, but wait, there's more. Mr. Kimball, would you please demonstrate and show the Peerless Beer Pin.
Nice.
Available only to students who are recognized for achievement at the state level and beyond. This evening, I have a special assistant helping me out today, none other than South Campus Principal, Mr. Tim Walde. Mr. Walde, please come forward.
Thank you, Dr. Lovett. Our Unified Sports Team allows students of all ability levels to compete together. This year, this fall, our Unified Bowling Team had outstanding success, and I'm pleased to introduce the members of our Unified Bowling Team who are with us tonight. First, we'll welcome Kailene Blumquist from Sunrise Park. Kailene took fifth place in singles. It will hold applause till all of the student athletes have been introduced. Jacob Chris from Central Middle School, Jacob took fourth place in singles. Caitlin DeFlorin attends Onika, and she took bronze in singles. Nathan Dot at T+ took silver in singles. Ailey Gilbertson is at Central Middle School, she took gold in singles, and gold in Unified And Hannah Gilbertson attends Onika, and she took gold in Unified Doubles. From Sunrise Park Middle School, Dustin Grafantine took silver in singles. And at North Campus, Donovan McGlattery took silver in Unified Doubles. From Sunrise Park Middle School, Katie McGlattery took bronze in Unified Doubles. From South Campus, Sean Salini, gold in singles and silver in Unified Doubles. From Central Middle School, Albert Leo took gold in singles. And from T+, Debbie Leo took fifth in singles and bronze in Unified Doubles. Sorry. Oh, that's Dad. He's a coach.
Too many Leos.
Just the right number of Leos. Sometimes I get excited and I call them too fast. And from North Campus, Juliana Avilas took sixth place in singles and bronze in Unified And we're pleased to have three coaches with us, Coach Dennis Leo. And Coach John Salini. Congratulations to our Bears Unified Bowling Team. Okay, now, all students and coaches, if you'll come line up in front of the board members, we'll take a group photo. Good time for parents to take pictures.
Okay, if we could scooch over just a little bit this way. Let's see, so do they have the kids like two rows in front of us? Let's see, do they have the kids like two rows in front of us? Sure. Maybe just push in a little bit. Yep, and then if the front row could just kneel, that might help, so we can just see everyone's faces and you can all see us. Dustin, would you like to kneel as well?
Yeah.
Dustin kneel down. Thank you. Very good.
I am, Mom.
We can all look at me, please. All right, we can just get one more to make sure we got it? Okay, and I'm gonna duck off the way for people. Dustin, smile.
Well, congratulations to everyone. I know that everybody's putting on your beer pins, but before I ask Mr. Walde to return, would all the family members of the Unified Bears Bowling Team please stand and be recognized? Thank you. If you didn't get enough pictures, we can do it all over again. Mr. Walde, our Varsity Bowling Team.
White Bear Lake Area High School provides a wide variety of activities and athletic opportunities for all students, and we're proud to have a bowling team at the high school. This year, our bowling team took first place, they were regular season champions, they were also conference tournament champions, and represented White Bear Lake High School in the state bowling tournament at Memory Lanes. I'm proud to introduce the athletes and the coaches of our bowling team, Aaron Schmidt, and our coaches, Kevin Gilbertson Congratulations to everyone affiliated with our bowling team. We'll invite the student athletes and coaches up for a picture with the board members. Then the paparazzi in the crowd can take photos at this time, too.
And then Cooper.
You're right in front of the nice young lady there.
Yeah. We can just rearrange that so we have this.
Maybe you guys could stand, because it's all getting done.
All right.
Gotcha.
You can't see the guy down there. One more here. Where am I seeing them? Nobody cry.
Not crying. Now, we're all close up on each other. Just how you like it, buddy.
There's a lot of people there. We're so quiet.
Finally, would members of the Varsity Bowling Team families please stand and be recognized? Okay, team, this is where you get to applaud. Now, families, parents, brothers and sisters, grandparents, everybody who's here, we recognize that all the hardware, the fancy pin, the certificate go to the student athlete, but all of you can be in the photograph. So, we'll be around with cameras. Our school board meeting doesn't start until 14 and 1/4 minutes, so for the next 10 minutes or so, if you'd like us to take pictures, you'd like to visit with school board members or one another, you're free to do so, but thank you so much for being with us this evening.
I will call to order this meeting of the School Board of Independent School District 624. Would the clerk please call the rule?
Chapman.
Here.
Fahy, here. Kimball.
Here.
Mullin.
Here.
Newberg.
Here.
Newmaster.
Here.
Wilson.
Here.
And would you all please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
All right, we have before us an agenda for this evening's meeting, which we've had a chance to review. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor of tonight's agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Right, the agenda is approved. We also have before us a consent agenda that consists of a number of items that are before the board on a routine basis every month, including some financial matters and personnel matters, but we always have in our consent agenda a resolution to approve gifts. And every month, we have individuals who've made generous gifts to the school district. This month is no exception. We have many, many of significance. We've had a number of donors in this last month who've contributed money towards the success of our fall play at White Bear Lake Area High School. We also have two parent-teacher organizations, which were very generous in their donations to support the activities of their elementary schools. Saying that, is there a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Mullin, is there a second?
Second.
And there's a second, this calls for a roll call vote.
Chapman.
Aye.
Fahy, aye. Kimball.
Aye.
Mullin.
Aye.
Newberg.
Aye.
Newmaster.
Aye.
Wilson.
Aye.
Right, we have a consent agenda. Now is the time for public forum, that's an opportunity for members of the public to address the board on any questions or matters of concern to them. We do ask people who want to address the board to fill out a card. Those cards are located on the table against the wall, and we ask them to bring the cards up to the dais before the meeting, and I don't see any cards here this evening. Is there anyone here who would like to address the board this evening? All right, we will turn to our next item of the agenda, and that's Information Item C1, and that is a Community Partnership Award from the Vannis Heights Economic Development Corporation. Dr. Lovett.
Madam Chair, members of the school board, a little over a month ago on November 1st, our school district received a very special award from the Vannis Heights Economic Development Corporation. With us this evening is Mr. Tim Walde, South Campus Principal, who will come forward and introduce the other guests with us this evening. Mr. Walde.
Welcome, Mr. Walde.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, Ms. Sherrick, Dr. Lovett. Pleased to be here tonight, and maybe just to break a little bit. I have with me tonight members of our team that really supported our work in to get this recognition by the Vannis Heights Economic Development Corporation. Several years ago, Dr. Lovett introduced our team to the team at DeFrane Manufacturing. We became fast friends, and just a few years later, we're recognized for a terrific partnership. With me tonight, I have Rich Wessels. Rich is navigator with our manufacturing career pathway, and Rich has with him two students who participate in that pathway, Caitlin Gray and Jack Olson. Also with me, with the Vannis Heights Economic Development Corporation, Executive Director Ling Becker, and Jim Stephan, who is the Vice President of Sales and Marketing with DeFrane Manufacturing. At this time, we'll show a video that gives you an idea, a little more information about
DeFrane Manufacturing's been in business for 25 years. Back in 2008 during the Great Recession, we had a drastic but very positive change in our business model, and that was realizing that employee development was an actual product that we provide to our employees. Running a business isn't always about business, it's about supporting our communities, and that's where the partnership comes in. Setting a direction toward careers in manufacturing is critical at the times those decisions are made in high school, and that's why we developed our Career Shadowing Program. The partnership is where our efforts will pay off. But our effort doesn't stop here. We've not only worked with White Bear Lake Schools, but North St. Paul, Maplewood, Oakdale, Academy for Science and Agriculture in Vannis Heights, as well as Century College and the
Our partnership with DeFrane Manufacturing began nearly eight years ago, when DeFrane contacted me and asked me whether we'd be interested in connecting with them, inviting administrators or teachers to see their plant. DeFrane Manufacturing was our first community partner. They invited us to their plant, to their facility here, and helped us see the possibilities, partnering with high school, partnering with the community to create opportunities for
DeFrane has been a fantastic partner in helping develop this career shadowing experience for students, to be able to come into an actual industry like DeFrane, see what goes on behind their doors, and to learn about different careers within manufacturing and
Sorry for this. Okay, we'll get going there.
Hello again, I'm Rich Wessels. I'm employed by Hired, and I work with the Manufacturing Pathway Program here in White Bear Lake Area Schools. As you saw from that video, this program began last year. I took approximately 20 students over last year in small groups of four to five students. This year, we hope to bring that many or more over to DeFrane to participate in this program as well. It's a great opportunity for students to learn about local manufacturing, interact with their employees, learn about careers in manufacturing and engineering, and also learn about some of the soft skills and technical skills that companies like DeFrane are looking for in their employees. Very happy to have with me tonight, Jack and Caitlin. I'll let them introduce themselves. They're both in the Manufacturing and Applied Engineering 1 course, and they, obviously, were both at this career shadow when this was filmed. They'll tell you a little bit about why they took this class, and explain a little more about the career shadow from their perspective.
Welcome, students.
Thank you. Hi, I'm Caitlin. I'm in 11th grade. Like Mr. Wessels said, I'm in the Manufacturing and Applied Engineering course at South Campus. I took the course. I'm interested in manufacturing and wanted to know more about it, and the field trip was a really good experience to learn more about whether or not that was something I would want to do, and whether or not it is something I want to do, it was a good experience to learn about what those type of jobs are looking for in workers and sort.
Hi, I'm Jack, and I'm also in 11th grade, and I'm in the same class, the Manufacturing and Applied Engineering 1. I decided to take this class because my dad works in medical technologies and started off as an engineer, so I'm very interested in pursuing the same, and he recommended that I take this class because it's a great look into what I could be doing for a job. And then I also really enjoyed seeing the machines and how much they've changed over time, because they had the old ones and the new ones, and the new ones were super cool and high-tech.
Your fault.
Any questions for the students before I introduce Jim?
I have a question first. What was that thing that looked like a giant mosquito that you guys were passing around at the table?
So, for being on the trip, they gave us like a sheet metal puzzle that we had to solve, and it came in like just a flat sheet, and then we had to figure out where all the parts went to make a 3D shape of whatever we got. And at the end, I got a spider, so that was pretty cool.
Sounds fascinating. Any other questions for the kids? Right, Mr. Wessels?
Thank you. I'd just like to introduce Jim, and he and I helped develop this program, and he's been very instrumental in creating this program on the side of DeFrane, so Jim Stephan.
Welcome, Mr. Stephan.
Thank you, and thanks for having me. I was speaking to Dr. Lovett at the Manufacturing Showcase on the 1st about some of the things that we're doing at DeFrane. One of them in particular is that I'm on a committee with the Department of Labor Industry on workforce development. My role there is more of a communication-type development role, but in those meetings, we keep hearing that White Bear Lake Manufacturing Pathways Program is kind of a poster child for what they want to try and accomplish throughout the other school districts, so it's well-referenced at the state. I'm on the advisory board for the University of Minnesota Manufacturing Operations Management Degree Program, otherwise known as the MOM degree, and I was asked in our last meeting just last week by the faculty director, Mac McKean, to say a few words about the White Bear Lake Manufacturing Pathways Program. So, the point of me being up here is that White Bear Lake is well-referenced in a lot of areas out there, so a lot of exposure, a lot of good kudos to the work that's being done here. So, thanks again to everybody and to Rich and the whole crew here at White Bear Lake for working with us on this, and I appreciate it.
Mr. Stephan, a big thank you to you, and especially to DeFrane Manufacturing. You are an invaluable partner to our district, and we really, really appreciate it.
You know, it's been a lot of fun, you know, sheet metal in itself, outside of the bugs and stuff that you see on the screen. It gets a little mundane from day to day, but to work with people on different types of projects like this really inspires a whole group at DeFrane.
Anyone have any questions for Mr. Stephan? Yes, Mr. Wilson.
Totally out of curiosity.
Sure.
And I'm not trying to stump you or anything.
That's okay.
Could you explain the meaning of DeFrane's logo, the Epsilon with the orbital ring around it?
Absolutely. Be nice if you could bring it up again in the beginning of this thing, but the, actually, it's right here. I'll speak out of turn. It's right here, and this is the capital Sigma, the Greek, so Sigma, we all know that is the constant renewal, and data, and then the circle is continuous improvement, so it's a very specific and very, very well-designed logo. So, we are a practicing Six Sigma company, and the circle says continuous improvement. Okay?
Thank you.
Questions for Mr. Stephan, Mr. Mullin?
Just more of a comment. I just want to echo what Chair Newberg said. I want to thank you, I want to thank the whole team. I mean, this is, this is great, as we look forward into career pathways and what that means for our students, and this program is just brilliant, so thank you all very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Working with DeFrane, we've also learned some new vocabulary. Well, the vocabulary manufacturing's new to many of us, but words like probability, there are no problems at DeFrane, just opportunities or probabilities, so when you spend time with DeFrane staff, you learn offhand some new language. Thanks, Jim. At this time, I'd like to introduce Ling Becker, the Executive Director of the Vannis Heights Economic Development Corporation, who will present the award to the board. Ling.
Good evening, Ms. Becker.
Hi, thanks for having me, Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Lovett. It is just an honor to be here, to be able to give you this award personally. On November 1st, we were able to give this award to Dr. Lovett and your team in front of 300 business leaders in the community. Our organization is over 30 years old, and this is really the main issue that in the business community right now that needs to be addressed is workforce. We did 45 business surveys last year where we sat down for an hour with the top business leaders in a business, and within, we did all that in 30 days. It was a very intense survey process, but workforce development, workforce issues was the number-one issue that businesses are concerned about, and as a result, this partnership highlights just everything that's going right in this community about people working hard to not only find jobs for today, for folks, but also for the future. One really exciting thing that happened a few weeks ago when we had one of our Workforce Development Committee meetings at the campus, one of the business partners, an owner of a manufacturing facility, he saw the Haas machine. Hopefully, some of you have seen some of the machinery there, and he said, you know, we just bought another one of these, and we bought this brand and this exact machine because of what's happening here. So, they're making even purchasing decisions based on what your school district's doing, and with hopes that they can just hire students, you know, right out of the gate. So, just, I've gotten, I've been so fortunate to get to work not only with your teachers, your principals, but, you know, and your administration. Everybody is working really hard to make this successful in this community, and I can't just thank you enough on behalf of the business community as to just the strong effort that you're making, and so we felt it very appropriate this year to give our partnership award to the school district and DeFrane. So, congratulations.
Well, thank you so much, Ms. Becker. Does anyone have any questions for Ms. Becker? I'll pass this along, maybe starting with Mr. Mullin, and we can pass it down this way so everyone can see it. Anyone have any questions for Ms. Becker? Well, I just have our profound thanks to both you and the Vannis Heights Economic Development Corporation. You've been such a strong supporter of our school district, and we look forward to a very long and successful working relationship with you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else, or is that the final presentation for this agenda item? Mr. Walde's giving me the thumbs up, I guess we're done. Well, thank you to all of you who came here tonight. All right, we'll turn to Information Item C2, the Superintendent's Report. Dr. Lovett.
Thank you, Madam Chair. To begin with, you've already seen a great deal this evening. Before this evening's meeting, we recognized members of the Unified Bears Bowling Team and the Varsity Bowling Team, both of which represented White Bear Lake Area Schools at state competition. Also in the news this week was our fall musical, Mary Poppins, which, as Mr. Kimball knows, was... Or said backwards? Make no doubt, this school board has talent. Well, we found out last week from Director Wendy Suya that Mary Poppins received 23 awards in the Hennepin Theater Trust Spotlight Program. Just a remarkable achievement. Program. Just a remarkable achievement. You'll hear a greet. You'll hear more about that in coming weeks. We've invited the students and the directors to come to the January Student Recognition Ceremony. But in addition to that, if you get your tickets early, they will perform on the Orpheum Stage this June as part of the Spotlight Program. Very exciting development.
Great.
Teacher of the Year nominations are available right now. Bree will tell us a little bit more about that, but the information is available on the website. It links with the Teacher Association Teacher of the Year forum, so it's available at our website. But please consider nominating a teacher by January 9th for recognition. It was, June 9th would be too, too late. January 9th, very special recognition in the spring. This month, seems like a short one in terms of school, but there are two more weeks, and the two weeks will be full not only of learning and school, but of remarkable activities. Our debate, our activities of an academic nature, our sports, apparently including tennis, but basketball, hockey. A very busy time, and it's a very special time for concerts, middle school and high school and elementary concerts. All that information is available on our webpage, the individual school webpages, or on the school activities calendar. Winter break will come. We, there are one full week plus four days of the following week. We, we know that students will take that time to be outside and enjoy our Minnesota winters. There was some hope yesterday that we might have a snow day today, but it wasn't quite, quite enough. But we know that it's a time for, time with family, time for service, and, and time for continuing to learn. We welcome everyone to, welcome to White Bear Lake Week in January. Ms. Vetti has put up a, a link from our, from our webpage here during the first week of January for families who may be considering the White Bear Lake Area Schools, and certainly families new to the area, and the parents of preschoolers or kindergartners. We have a special welcome to Welcome to White Bear Week, early childhood, elementary, middle school, and high school, and lots of opportunities. Bree, what's going on from a student's perspective?
Well, first off, I want to recognize that we have some familiar faces in the audience. We have Keira Renner, who was the student liaison last year, and we also have some of the superintendent student advisory committee members here. So, welcome. And as, as Dr. Lovett said, we have a lot of activities, sports, and clubs going on throughout our transition from fall into winter. Many sports and activities are starting up, including boys' and girls' basketball, Nordic and Alpine ski, sensicality, gymnastics, swim and dive, wrestling, the one-act play, and hockey, which our team is, or 6-0, so they're doing really awesome this year. Also, another popular activity amongst White Bear Lake students is to join a rec basketball team, and registration for that ends on Thursday. Something also very exciting is from our College and Career Center is they have a new Snapchat account, which keeps students updated on benchmark points for juniors or senior year, job, job applications, college visits, and for seniors, the deadlines for many colleges. So, make sure to follow their account to stay updated with the College and Career Center. Also, the senior all-night party theme has been announced, which will be a Hawaiian luau theme. The senior class officers, led by Mr. Danielson, is looking for volunteers/chaplones to help make the party a success. So, if you're looking into that, please contact Mr. Danielson. And also, as Dr. Lovett said, we have Teacher of the Year nominations now being accepted. All students at White Bear Lake High School are being encouraged to submit applications to the main office by, I think it's the end of next week, and I will for sure be submitting one, hopefully by the end of this week. So, a lot of fun things happening.
Thank you, Dr. Lovett. Thank you, Bree, for both of you had an excellent presentation as always. We'll turn to our first discussion item, D1, Presentation and Public Hearing Related to the Proposed 2016 Payable 2017 Property Tax Levy. Dr. Kazmercheck.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. So, tonight's presentation, I will try to move it along. It's rather lengthy, but I want to preface the presentation by saying it is available on our district website already. So, any member of the public will be able to find it on our, our finance page. So, it is available. Much of the information will be, will be an overview, and it's intended to help inform the public about a few things. And towards the end of the presentation, we'll get into the, more of the detail about the actual tax levy. So, so if I move over a few slides, don't worry, they are available. But I wanted to make sure we highlight what, what I've determined to be the most important of the 50 or so slides this evening. So, welcome. This is our public meeting on our tax, our taxes for fiscal year 18. So, we are required, school districts are required to hold their hearing prior to December 28th and after November 25th. So, we're in that window of time. We hold ours typically at a regularly scheduled school board meeting. So, this evening, information on our current year budget and actual revenue and expenditures from the prior year will be, will be presented. Information on our proposed property tax levy, the percentage change over the prior year, specific purposes and reasons for which taxes have changed, and then there's an opportunity for the public to speak if, if anyone here wishes to do so. Again, I reviewed our agenda here. It is a little more succinctly. And this is a point where I'm going to jump ahead a bit. A couple of themes that we, we talk about in school finance, one, one issue in particular in Minnesota, and this is a, this has been an issue throughout the country, but in Minnesota, typically, general education revenue increases are, are, do not keep up with inflation, and that is a challenge for us year in and year out. The last couple of legislative sessions, our legislature has, has done pretty well by education. But typically, over the last decade, we have lagged inflation. So, if you look at this graphic, the green line is where we are with our, our basic formula allowance. The red line is where we would be with, with increases that would equal the Consumer Price Index. So, that gap is typically made up by districts, either through local levies or other funding sources or reducing expenditures. So, this is, this is not new information. This is, this has been a typical issue that our state has wrestled with over the last few years. Another, another common issue in Minnesota, and again, throughout the country, and, and, but in Minnesota, we, we see our special education costs increase considerably greater than the Consumer Price Index, and special ed costs that are not funded specifically are, are funded through our general education revenue. So, that's a, that's a longstanding issue for school districts. Again, the last couple of legislative sessions have, has, they've led to some relief in that regard, but it's still something to be very mindful of as we move forward. School districts in Minnesota rely heavily on operating, operating levy referendum revenue. Back in 1993, when school districts first had the opportunity to pursue referendum funding, the average per pupil amount was 332. We're up to over 1,200 now, and all school districts receive some sort of referendum revenue, either through voter-approved or, or board-approved means. All right, changes in tax levies do not necessarily determine additional revenue, and we're, we'll talk about a couple of examples when we get into the specifics. But just wanted to make a note that our expenditure budget is limited by state-set formulas, voter-approved levies, and, and our fund balance. Operating capital is one that comes to mind, and if you've been on the board a while, you'll, you'll probably recall that operating capital is one that has typically been trending more and more towards local, local property taxes. It doesn't necessarily mean that there's more revenue. It just means that it's a change in state policy. City and county budgets are account, on a calendar-year basis. School districts are on a July 1 to June 30 basis. So, that's the difference between cities, counties, and school districts. As a result, we present only our current year budget information and last year's actual information at the tax hearing. All right, this, this graphic was in the, in our local newspaper a couple of weeks ago. This is a required notice that we put in each November. We have nine different funds. They're highlighted here. If you count the lines, there's actually, the, the first two lines are actually our, our general fund. So, this information has been, is, is available, was available in our school district newspaper. It's available on our school district website. I'm not going to spend a lot of time going through the detail of this document, of this particular graphic, but a couple of things I just wanted to mention. One is that if you were to combine, and for 2015, 16, if you combine the first two lines, you'll, you'll see that essentially we had a balanced budget in our, for, for our general fund. And we're also anticipating a balanced budget for this current fiscal year. And the way you would see that is if you would combine the first two lines, where it says 2016-17 revenue and 2016-17 expenditure. Our fund balance has been, has remained strong. The school board adopted a policy a couple of years ago. Our policy states that we'll maintain a fund balance of 12.5% to 16.7% of our expenditures, and we have maintained that, and we're right, we're right in that, right in that range. Overall, our, all, all funds combined, our overall, overall revenue is about 122 million. Let's break that down in a couple of different ways here. Firstly, oh, actually, just moving into the general fund, that's our primary, our, our, general fund is our, our largest fund. That's where most of our operations are funded. Our state aid accounts for 72% of our revenue. Property taxes account for 23.5% of our revenue, and our federal aid account, accounts for 2.8%. This is a fairly typical breakdown in the Twin Cities metro area. Federal aid is typically higher where you'll see high, greater free and reduced counts, but... And our expenditures by program, again, a lot of information here, but regular instruction, special education, and instructional and pupil support services are, are, are largest three areas where, in which we expend. This is of, again, a fairly typical breakdown, and it compares very, very closely to last year's presentation. We're within, in most categories, within a tenth or, or two of a percentage. Interestingly, and you, you would probably guess this, that in a human resources-heavy industry like education, if you combine our salaries and wages along with our employee benefits, that accounts for over 83% of our expenditures. Again, typical, depending on what a school district might have going on in any given year, if, if, for example, a district has some capital expenditures that are maybe out of the ordinary, you might see 78% to 83 or 84% for salaries and benefits. Okay, moving into our property tax levy. So, each owner of property pays property taxes for the various jurisdictions. Each jurisdiction sets its own tax levy, and then the county sends out bills, collects the property taxes, and then disperses the revenue to the various taxing jurisdictions, jurisdictions, including school districts. By now, we've probably all received our property tax statements. Those would have gone out in mid-November from the county. School districts can levy in 30 different categories. Levy limits are set by state law or voter approval, and we work with the Department of Education, the Minnesota Department of Education, to finalize our, our levy limits. So, the Minnesota School District property taxes, there's, it's, the process is laid out here. I'm not going to go through this, but there are, the school board is obviously involved, and that's highlighted step six, but there are a lot of other, a lot of other steps involved in the process. This is to highlight that the, the school board has some role in it, but it, not the, not as much control as one might think. So, back in September, September 8th, the Department of Ed prepared and distributed our first draft of our levy limit document. There were multiple changes leading up to that September 26th school board meeting where you approved the proposed levy amounts. In mid-November, we would have, folks would have received their proposed property tax statements. Tonight is our public hearing on our, on our proposed levy, and we're holding that at a regular meeting. And following, immediately following this presentation, you'll be asked to certify the final levy amounts. And a lot of information on this particular slide. I'm, I'm not going to go through each line, but I do want to point out at the very bottom, so we'll focus on the bottom line. So, the negative 0.5%, our property taxes for this, for this particular year will be going down a half a percent, so down 180,000. And... So, I'm going to explain briefly some of the reasons why we've seen some changes. The main, the larger categories of change. First of all, our referendum revenue has gone up by about $580,000. This is due to a couple of things. Firstly, we're anticipating enrollment growth. So, as our enrollment grows, our operating levy revenue increases. In addition, we have an inflation adjustment each, each year, so that, assuming we're in a period of inflation and not deflation, our revenue increases. Student achievement levy, this went down 113,000. This is a, this is a category that's actually being phased out. It was added not that long ago, but it's, it's being phased out again, and so we'll see that eliminated from our, our levy in the near future. And the change is made in part to offset an increase in our long-term facilities maintenance levy. Operating capital, this is one that I mentioned earlier, is typically, we see operating capital increase from year to year in school districts. This is one year that it's actually decreased by 272,000. Operating capital has fairly broad usage, but typically, it's technology, facilities, maintenance, or other, other capital expenses. This is an aid levy mix program, the operating, operating levy, or, I'm sorry, operating capital. The state changed the funding formula to cause the reduction in tax levies, and it, and, and so we see an increase in state aid. We actually don't see a change in our revenue. The state is just covering more of it, and the local taxpayers are covering less. This is also made in part to offset the increase in our long-term facilities maintenance levy. And I've mentioned this a couple of times, the long-term facilities maintenance program gives districts throughout the state access to funds that they didn't have before. There, we've talked that White Bear Lake was one of the 25 school districts that qualified for the alternative facilities of funding model. That's now been extended to other school districts, and so we are part of that. So, with the phase-in, our per pupil amount went from 193, and this is statewide, to 292. And this program replaces health and safety, deferred maintenance, and alternative facilities revenue programs. So, our L, long-term facilities maintenance amount went up by a little over 800,000. And again, this is part of the phase-in period. We've had some discussion with our financial advisor about the balance between issuing bonds and, and doing the, a mix of issuing bonds and the levy, and we'll continue to work through that over the next few years. There, it does make some sense to continue both bonding and levying. And again, we'll, we'll continue to work through that. But just the per pupil amount increase with the, with the, with the phase-in results in the increase. That's, that's why the increase is what it is. And then prior year adjustments. We, every year have adjustments. This year is no different. We have a negative adjustment of about, about 950,000. The two largest adjustments are health and safety and our lease levy. So, with health and safety, health and, health and sa, what this means is that over the years, school district has levied $367,000 more than what projects actually cost. So, we make a best estimate, and this is, historically, this goes back several years. You make your best estimate, you complete projects, and then you submit your expenditure reports to the, to the Department of Education, and then they make adjustments accordingly. If you, if you underspent or overspent, If you, if you underspent or overspent, you're able to make up the difference in a, in, in an adjustment. So that, that's what that one reflects. And then on the instructional lease levy, this has to do with the timing, this goes back a few years, but I believe it would have been back in December of 2012. The, the district approved Moving Ahead with a Funding Model for the, for the, this one happened to be the Matoska Gymnasium. And it's a lease levy, so we're, we're levying each year to pay the debt on that project, on the gymnasium. But the issue was the timing. It wasn't, it wasn't the cost of the project, it was actually the timing. So the district actually levied when it thought it would need the funding, but in fact, the first payment wasn't due till a little bit later, so we, we just had to, basically returning the, the revenue that we received for it. So, so again, nothing, all that out of the ordinary, there are, there are adjustments every year. Health and safety is certainly one that is commonplace. And of course, that'll be, that'll be going away, because health and safety is going away as a funding model with the long-term facilities maintenance. Community Service Fund, negative 92,000 compared to the previous year, for various reasons. The primary reason is, again, a couple of years ago, we estimated that our school age care levy, which, which are dollars that are used to, to fund outside of school time programming for students with special needs, we estimated our expenses to be greater than what they actually were. And so that's the primary reason for the, for the reduction from one year to the next. And then debt service, a decrease of 123,000. Our debt service is pretty well laid out for us when we issue debt, and we do, we do collect over and above the amount that, of our payments, just to make sure we have enough in case there are delinquent taxes. And the Department of Ed allows us to accumulate a certain amount in a fund, a debt excess fund, but from time to time, the state then gives, makes an adjustment so that we don't get that, that excess fund too high. So that's what this is. This is a reduction in that excess fund. Right, moving on to tax impact, again, with the overall decrease of a half a percent, the tax impact is going to be what you, what you'll, what you'd suspect. But I want to point out, our financial advisor estimates that our property taxes have increased by 13 and a half percent over the, over a four-year period. And so, let me jump ahead to a graphic which may be almost impossible to see, but the estimated market value for 2017 taxes, it's the first yellow column. So those are the, those are the figures that were, so if you, if you just want to pick a, pick a figure, $300,000 home, and then move to the right, you can see what your taxes would be, and then how that compares to the prior, the prior year. That's, that's the last column on the right. And the changes in taxes over that four-year period is, is the, the column that's in between those highlighted ones. If you go back in this graphic, you, you start with 2017, so they've discounted that amount by 13 and a half percent to get back to the, the 2014 amount, just to give an example of a typical property taxes for, for district properties at various, various values. So we've got residential homestead, we've got commercial industrial, we've got apartments highlighted here. Again, this isn't, I'm not, I don't intend to go through each of these, but the bottom line on this particular slide is on the far right, regardless of your, at least as the ones that are presented here, regardless of your, the value of your property, you're seeing a slight decrease in your taxes. And again, this is a, this is a depiction of the same information, just highlighting four different, four different types of property, 250,000 and 400,000 residential homestead, and then a half a million dollar commercial industrial property and a million dollar State of Minnesota has a couple of refund programs and one tax deferral program available. We never pretend to give advice about your taxes from a school district, but we do want folks to know that there are programs out there. So the best way to get information is to go to the www.revenue.state.mn.us and check out the Minnesota Property Tax Refund, also known as the Circuit Breaker Refund. It's been around a while. People might be able to take advantage of that. And then there's a special property tax refund, and that's available for homestead properties with a gross tax increase of at least 12 percent over the prior year. So people may want to check that out if they fall into that category. And then there's a senior citizen property tax deferral that allows people 65 years of age and older to defer a portion of their property taxes on their home. So at this point, we would accept any public comments and questions on the proposed levy, and then subsequent to that, the board will certify the property tax levy, so.
I think I'll open it up first to questions from the board, for you, Dr. Kazmercheck, and then, following that, I'll open it up to any members of the public who would like to speak to the proposed levy. Do any of the members of the board have any questions for Dr. Kazmercheck? Mr. Mullen.
Dr. Kazmercheck, so the, and I just want to be clear, so the operating levy would cover all aspects of the school district, all the services that we offer?
The, the, the operating levy?
Yes.
Yes, the, yes, it's a, it's a general fund revenue.
Okay, so the community services, can you tell us all the services that the school district offers?
Community, under the community services umbrella, we have adult basic education, we have our school readiness program. Typically, we call that our preschool programming, but the term used in statute of school readiness. Let's see, what am I forgetting, Tim? Senior services, seniors, the senior programming, the programs housed at Normandy.
Youth rec, adult rec.
Youth rec, adult rec, yeah.
So, just to, can fairly say then, that we can say that this would cover all aspects of the community then?
The.
The renewal.
The, the levy that we're, that we're.
Yes.
Yes, it covers all, all of our, it covers all of our funding areas, all of the various funds are impacted by the levy, yeah.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Dr. Kazmercheck? Mr. Kimball?
Just a comment, I, thank you for the, the presentation. I think our visiting students were especially mesmerized by it. And I want to just, you know, especially appreciate that, and we had time to review this, you know, in the days before the meeting, a very concise, good bullet on each explanation of levy changes and revenue changes, and so that was particularly helpful. Thank you.
Any other questions for Dr. Kazmercheck? All right, now we will open it up to any members of the public here tonight who would like to address the proposed levy. Is there anyone who would like to speak to it tonight? All right, seeing none, we will turn to our next agenda item, which is the certification of the property tax levy. Dr. Kazmercheck.
All right, thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. So separate agenda item now, you've got page 90 of your board packet, certification of final 2016 payable 2017 property tax levy. You've got the amount listed there in your, in your memorandum, and so I would, it's based on what you just saw through the presentation, so I'll, I'll just turn it over, and then if there are questions, once, once a motion is made, I'll be here to answer questions.
Thank you. We have a recommendation that we approve, the certification of the final 2016 payable 2017 property tax levy in the amount of $36,68,484.99. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Chapman, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Wilson. We've already had a lengthy presentation on this. Does anyone have any additional questions for Dr. Kazmercheck? All right, this calls for a roll call vote. Chapman?
Aye.
Fahy? Aye. Kimball?
Aye.
Mullen?
Aye.
Newberg?
Aye.
Newmaster?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Thank you very much, Dr. Kazmercheck. We'll turn to our next agenda item, E2, and that's action on the senior transportation transition plan. Mr. Moore, welcome.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. Thank you guys for having us tonight. What you have in front of you, we have our transportation transition plan that we provided to you guys to provide our next steps with the Lionmobile and what we plan to do with senior transportation. Prior to that, I do want to acknowledge that we have Lion, Mary Cass, and Lion Doug Shepherd, from our initial meeting with you guys at the work study back in September, through our presentations to city administrators, city council meetings, to follow up our last work study generally been supporters through and through throughout the entire process. So a big thank you for them, for their collaboration and their support as we move forward at these next steps. So just want to take a minute to acknowledge that. And then I'll be passing the mic off to Tara Jebbinsing, our adult programs coordinator, who will be just giving a brief synopsis of the transition plan, and then here to offer answers to any questions you guys may have.
Very good, thank you. Welcome, Ms. Jebbinsing.
Thank you. Well, I just wanted to let you know, too, that, like, I, I want to express my appreciation as well to the Lions. Not only have they been a huge supporter of the district and the senior program, but throughout this challenging and, and sad process, as we say goodbye to, possibly to a program that's been with us for a very long time. It's, it's been very helpful to have them there, side by side, as we've had tough discussions in the community, so I really appreciate their help. So basically, what we're reviewing today is the transportation plan that we've been discussing a couple of times here at the school board. The highlights for this are, once there has been a decision made by the school board about the future of the program, what we would start doing, and have already started laying some of that groundwork at the senior center, is to put into plan, first of all, announcing out to the community some of the changes, letting them know the transition plan, so everybody feels that they know what we know and what the timeframe is. One of the big parts of that will be to let folks know that the, the, the Lionmobile bus will continue to provide service to our current riders through the winter months. We see the very earliest date of ceasing service would be at the end of March, so that would continue through the winter months. And we feel that that would give us ample time to work with our elder resource specialists, to do some personal counseling with the riders, but also to do some education to the community at large. We already have three specific educational events and focus groups planned in the community to promote a knowledge of the different transportation options that are already available and in service in our area, so that if anybody who is concerned about that, that they can get questions ahead of time while we still have service in place. And then we would be able to then assess, as we're going through this process, if the transition for our riders is going as smoothly as we expect. If there are any delays or any concerns that we have, that processing perhaps metro mobility applications or any of that is taking longer than we expect, we certainly have the flexibility to maneuver the timeframe if needed. But what we are expecting is then to be able to use the rest of the fiscal year to trans, to transfer all of the things we would need to do administratively to sunset the program, so that by the end of our fiscal year, we will have wrapped up any reporting obligations we have to our granters and to the state, and anybody else who is part of our program with that. So one of the things that we did want to let you know, too, is that we are working on, we've had such positive response from our housing guide. We have people coming into the senior center every day specifically asking about this. I had reserved three boxes in my office, thinking that, well, we might need to bring those out in the spring. We cracked them open already this week, so there's been a high demand for this, and based off of the success of this, we are taking what had been basically our transportation options flyer. Just so you know, since the beginning of using the Lionmobile, we've also been doing transportation service navigation for years. As people call in and ask for rides, quite often, the Lionmobile wasn't the best or the only service that was helpful for them. So we've been helping families and individuals navigate those services for years. We're going to continue doing that, but during this time of transition, we're going to up our game a little bit and make that even easier. So taking something that looks like this, and is much more helpful and thorough and heftier as a guide for folks into something like this. So expect to see that over the winter months. And basically, just to let folks know that the senior program is part of our tran, as our transition plan, has already made plans to get district leadership involved in what's next for the senior program. So we're holding y'all to the idea that we've heard nothing but ongoing support for the senior program beyond a program like this changing, and so we're already making plans to fill those gaps. So you'll, you'll hear more and more of those ideas coming from the community and from the senior program itself. Do we have any questions about the transition plan?
Are there any questions for Ms. Jebbinsing about the transition plan? We'll start with Ms. Newmaster, and then Mr. Wilson, and then Mr. Chapman.
And mine really isn't a question, I just want to give you applause and accolades, this whole group, and I've seen it from the beginning with the first meetings I went to, maybe last spring and early summer. Everybody's been very positive, our district does a great job, and looking at the reality of the wave of seniors coming on, and, and how to meet needs, you've done a great job of putting together a network. And the community is just great. I didn't ever realize it existed until I was liaisoned to this very active group. And I've recommended to other people, go to meetings, they're useful meetings, and you'll find a bunch of really pleasant people. But the Lionmobile has been such an important service and famous name in our district, and they'll just find the next important niche. I mean, you know it. So thanks to everybody.
And I'll just piggyback on that, I, I believe what you're referring to is our community forum on seniors, and our next meeting will be in February, so we'll have information about that if folks want to get involved.
Wilson?
Bearing in mind, this is still very much in flux, but the idea of honoring the legacy of the Lionmobile, which, if I recall correctly from our work group, we were maybe thinking of distributing food services or something like that, but whatever, which I fully support, you know, honoring the legacy of the Lionmobile, it's been an integral part of our community for a number of years. However, the Lions aren't going to own it anymore, it's going to be, you know, the ownership's going to be transferred, and what if they say, not in a way, not in a how, you know, bearing in mind, I'm not looking for an answer per se now, but just some thought, and we can pursue it at a, at a later work group meeting. But, you know, what, what happens then if the new group says, no, it's ours, we're going to use it the way we want, we're going to paint it the way we want, things like that?
Well, I, I can answer one little bit of that. The 5310 program, it's a program through the Minnesota Department of Transportation. They help us purchase the bus, and in doing that, there are very specific regulations as to how that bus is then sunsetted, should a program choose to have to dispose or, or shift a bus. And so we'll actually have to follow, I believe, MinDOT's suggestions for the 5310 program. So I believe that, that the vehicle itself will, will, will have to follow a little bit of those guidelines. It may, probably, most buses that are like this, that are purchased through this program, are transferred to another provider, another 5310 program. So, and the Lions are fully aware of that, and we're, we're thinking of all sorts of creative ways to use our partnership going forward. In fact, we were just chatting about when our next meeting is, to make some of those plans, so.
Okay, fair, go ahead.
Chapman?
Well, first off, I want to thank the individuals from the Lions Club that are here. As we mentioned at the work study, I know several of us went around the table and, and wanted to give you, you know, public accolades for all that you do in the community, and want to do it here again tonight. So thank you so much for everything you've done. And then I've got a question, and it has to do with transfer of the ownership of the bus. We haven't identified at this point who that may be, the way it looks, is that correct, or?
Do we know, I'm going to bring a financial question to Wayne, do we have the specifics on they yet, or are we still working with them to get guidance?
Yeah, we don't have specifics yet.
Yeah, from what, the guidance that we've gotten from MinDOT, informally at this point, because we haven't formally made a decision with the program yet, is that traditionally they encourage us, or maybe even require us, to move to another 5310 program. It could be another community group like, another community group or another school district like ours, or it could be a different kind of transportation fleet that receives that funding.
Now, any questions to my right? I was going to my left before. Any questions for Ms. Jebbinsing? All right, and all I have to say before we vote on this is to echo what our other board members have already said about the Lions. You know, I remember seeing the Lionmobile around White Bear when I was a student in this district, and that was a long time ago. Mr. Kimball was a student with me in the district. And not only that, but seeing all of the charitable works that the White Bear Lions have done over the years in so many different areas. You support the kids, you support the school district, you support the elderly, you support the community. You are an incredibly valuable asset to this community, and we know, even though you may not be operating the Lionmobile, you're going to continue to do so much good for this community. We thank you very much. All right, we have a recommendation that we accept the proposed transition plan as recommended by the administration. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
I think Mr. Kimball got that by a hair and seconded by Ms. Newmaster. All right. This does call for a roll call vote.
Chapman?
Aye.
Fahy, aye. Kimball?
Aye.
Mullin?
Aye.
Newberg?
Aye.
Newmaster?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Thank you very much. All right, we will now turn to agenda item E3, and that's action on accepting the brochures grants. Dr. Lovett?
Madam Chair, members of the board, in September, Connie Mini, our president of our school foundation, came to and described overall the picture of what the foundation does during the year. This evening, we're asking you to take action on accepting the brochures grants, nearly $15,000 in nine separate grants to middle school, elementary teachers, high school teachers that are going to be used in the classrooms. Wonderful descriptions of the different programs really reflects the generosity of our community and the work of the foundation to build a partnership with this by creating an opportunity for teachers to make proposals for tools, for curriculum, for technology that will help them improve the instruction. We're recommending acceptance.
We have a recommendation that we accept the brochures teaching grants as shown in the attached materials in the total amount of $14,515.05. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Wilson? Seconded by Mr. Chapman? All right, very good. Any questions for Dr. Lovett about the brochures grants? Yes, Mr. Wilson?
Going to pull a page out of Mr. Kimball's book here and say, not a question, but a comment. Perhaps board members don't realize that all of these brochures awardees have already been screened, investigated, and approved by the educational foundation. So, by the time they come to us for a motion to accept, all of the program particulars have been screened, vetted is the common, you know, word used these days, but to make sure that all of the requirements were met. So, you can rest assured that these are all worthy individuals.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. Any other comments or questions? All right, we have a motion and a second. This does call for a roll call vote. Chapman?
Aye.
Fahy, aye. Kimball?
Aye.
Mullin?
Aye.
Newberg?
Aye.
Newmaster?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
The motion carries. We'll turn to our next agenda item E4, and that's action on the STEM mini grant from H.B. Fuller. Dr. Lovett?
H.B. Fuller Corporation has been very generous over the last several years, annually providing technology tools to our particularly middle school and elementary teachers. This evening, we're making a recommendation to accept a vex, metal vex building kit, which will be used at our middle school technology courses. You may wonder what a vex, metal vex building kit is. We had this a couple of years ago, and we looked it up and learned more about it, and these are tools for building robots. The students are able to use metal and hardware pieces. In a sense, the hardware and the connectors that allow them to build more sophisticated robots as part of our middle school STEM program, Project Lead the Way Robotics Program. So, this is really a compliment to our teachers who've made these proposals, and deep appreciation for and to H.B. Fuller for their ongoing support.
Well, we have a recommendation that we accept the STEM mini grant from H.B. Fuller in the amount of $5,250. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
A motion by Mr. Wilson. Is there a second?
Second?
Seconded by Ms. Fahy. Any questions for Dr. Lovett? All right, this calls for a roll call vote. Chapman?
Aye.
Fahy, aye. Kimball?
Aye.
Mullin?
Aye.
Newberg?
Aye.
Newmaster?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
And that motion carries. We'll turn to our next action item, E5, and that is action on an advisor contract for superintendent. As we all know, we are in search of a new superintendent for this district as Dr. Lovett has announced his resignation affecting, effective June 30th. The board did put together a subcommittee of the board to address early process issues in this search, and we did ask the subcommittee to make a determination whether we needed an outside advisor or consultant to help us with process issues, and if so, to come to the board with a recommendation for who that advisor or consultant might be. George Kimball headed this subcommittee, and I'd like Mr. Kimball to address your recommendation. Mr. Kimball?
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair. There were six proposals submitted, and the subcommittee of three met and reviewed all of the proposals and compared those proposals to the specifics that were mentioned in our In the process, two proposals stood out in the fact that they addressed our specifications, including our stated desire to keep the board in charge of the process. That was a really important piece. Each step along the way, and also, they were, they stood out in terms of the cost proposals staying within our recommended max. After careful consideration, we did select one, and that selection was the proposal submitted by Ken La Croix. So, Ken La Croix is the consultant we recommend. His list of proposals clearly indicated that he had reviewed the RFP carefully and really thought about our specifications, our needs. He did not send in, for example, a template or a prepackaged proposal of any type. The list of superintendent searches that he has conducted and the list of references were very impressive. And again, his cost proposal did not exceed our stated budget. The list of his successful superintendent searches include the districts, include, there are more, but they include the districts of Rosemount, Apple Valley, Eagan, Lakeville, Byron, Farmington, Pryor Lake Savage, North Branch, Faribault, West St. Paul, Mendota Heights, Moundsview, Marah Mirai, Hastings, the East Metro Integration District, Northfield, South St. Paul, and Brooklyn Center. So, he's had a nice mix of smaller to middle to larger districts. And he has also done consultant contract work for our own district in the past. In addition to a detailed written recommendation from the Byron School District, the subcommittee got very positive. Every recommendation or reference that we personally sought came back very positive, and those, that means that the three of us each contacted one or more parties, and those recommendations came back from representatives of South St. Paul, Pryor Lake Savage, Inver Grove Heights, North Branch, Elk River, and Rosemount, Apple Valley, Eagan, and included school board members and/or superintendents who have worked with Ken La Croix. So, with that, that is our recommendation. There is a contract that is in the agenda, and I'm not sure how to proceed exactly, but I actually, I actually would like to introduce a amendment to a part of the language that's in the contract.
And I think since we don't have a motion on the table, there's, you not, don't even need an amendment. You can just present the, whatever contract version with any change language from the written materials as a primary motion.
Okay.
And the clerk is going to have to keep track of this, so. Got it.
So, if we're looking at the contract, you've got two pages of kind of the contract, and second page has the signatures. And then, we have a page that has like Roman number one identification, two basic services provided, and that's the section that I'm going to be amending. And there are a number of bullets, and if we go to the second page of bullets, halfway down, there's a bullet that starts with review and screen the candidate application and credential.
And I say for everyone's reference, at least on the packet, the electronic packet, it's on page 108 of the electronic version, and that is the numbered page in the packet. On the bottom, it's page 103. Does everyone have that in front of them now? All right, go ahead, Mr. Kimball.
Okay, so, the amendment would change this bullet paragraph as so. We would keep the review and screen the candidate application and credential materials, conduct preliminary interviews, and, so that all stays the same, and then I would suggest a comma following the word "and," and insert "in a process to be determined by the full Again, inserting after the word "and," comma, "in a process to be determined by the full board," comma, assist the board in recommending. And now, I would delete the three next, or the four next words in the original, so I would delete "recommend" a slate of, just delete those words. And so, it would then read, "in a process to be determined by the full board," comma, "assist the board in recommending candidates for first round interviews," and then I would put a period and delete the rest of this bullet. Then, I would add one more sentence as part of this bullet that would read, "all board members will have access to all applications."
All right, let me see if I can read what your motion is. The motion is to approve a contract as reflected in our written materials with one change, and that is on numbered page 103 of the material in the fifth bullet point down, and Mr. Kimball tracked me to make sure I'm reading this correctly. It would now read, "review and screen the candidate application and credential materials, conduct preliminary interviews," comma, "and in a process to be determined by the full board," comma, "assist the board in recommending candidates for first round interviews." All that board members will have access to all applications. Is that correct?
You know, it was like 99.8% correct. There was like--
99 and a half won't do. Ever hear that gospel song?
One comma was, you know, it's not a big deal, but we can go with that.
All right. All right, so we have Mr. Kimball's motion regarding the contract on the table. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, second by Mr. Chapman. Any discussion?
Janet, can you, Madam Chair, can you read that back just one more time? Because I just want to make sure I got it down.
And Mr. Kimball tracked me carefully. So, that fifth bullet point will now read, "review and screen the candidate application and credential materials," comma, "conduct preliminary interviews," comma, "and in a process to be determined by the full board," comma, "assist the board in recommending candidates for first round interviews," period. All board members will have access to all applications. Is that correct, Mr. Kimball?
Yes, that's correct.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments?
Yeah, I do. So, in the first part of that, it talks about conducting preliminary interviews. So, this gentleman would conduct those interviews of all the candidates? Is that, is that the process going to be laid out?
Mr. Kimball?
No. As I understand it, that this would be, the consultants would have a, the consultant would have the prerogative to do preliminary interviews as needed and if needed to clarify or verify or just get information that he thought was necessary in order to fully vet the candidates, and then would share that information or add it to the applications that we see.
All right, any other questions regarding the proposed contract with the modification that I read into the record? All right, we have a motion and a second, and this is a financial matter, so this does call for a roll call vote. Ms. Fahy?
Chapman?
Aye.
Fahy, aye. Kimball?
Aye.
Mullin?
Aye.
Newberg?
Aye.
Newmaster?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
All right, the motion carries. Thank you for your recommended change, Mr. Kimball, and I'll leave it to Ms. Gores and Mr. Kimball to contact Mr. La Croix. We know that in the superintendent search, time is fleeting, and it would be useful to get Mr. Croix working on our behalf as soon as possible. All right, thank you. We'll turn to our last agenda item, E6, and that is a second reading of policies. I have described on many occasions the process that the board goes through in promulgating or editing policies. When the administration either has a new policy they want to propose or proposed amendments to existing policies, either due to legislative, regulatory changes, or simple board preference, administration brings those policies to the school, the board policy committee. Policy committee reviews those, then brings them to the board for first reading, which is the opportunity for the board to ask each other questions about the policies. Once they have gone through first reading, they come back to the board for second reading, which is our opportunity, final opportunity to ask any questions and to vote. I'm going to entertain a motion in one fell swoop to approve all six of the policies before us tonight for second reading. They are policy 206, public participation in board meetings, policy 525, violence prevention, policy 701, establishment and adoption of budget, policy 701.1, modification of school district budget, policy 702, accounting, and policy 805, waste reduction and recycling. Is there a motion to approve these six policies?
So moved.
A motion by Mr. Chapman. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Kimball. We've had an opportunity at our last meeting to ask any questions. We've had ample opportunity to review these. Are there any remaining questions about these policies? All right, all those in favor of these policies, please say aye. Aye opposed? Right, that motion carries. So, I lied before, we were not at our last agenda item. We now go to our last agenda item, which is board forum. This is an opportunity for members of the board to share any upcoming events or issues of concern to each other and to the public. Does anyone have anything for board forum tonight? Yes, Mr. Wilson?
I did note in the personnel actions, the retirement of one Mrs. Karen Fisher, whom I had the honor and privilege of being in her wedding party, so I would particularly like to underscore my congratulations to her upon her retirement from Lincoln Elementary. And then, the second item is, I was encouraged strongly by the choir director to make sure that I mentioned the choir concert at South Campus at-- that I mentioned the choir concert at South Campus at 7:00 PM on the 19th. So we hope everyone that's available can attend that.
One week from tonight, be there or be square.
Something like that.
All right. Anyone else have anything for Board Forum? Mr. Kimball?
Yes. I want to, number one, just thank Ms. Gores out there. And she just always says, you don't have to thank. She, she, you know, does her job and does it well. But in this process of getting to where we're at right now in the superintendent contract, consultant contract, just an outstanding job to you and whoever else you had help you with all of our last minute requests. Number two, there are some other retirements of classified staff. One of our great custodians at South Campus retiring after 15 years. Administrative assistant for, at Lincoln, 23 years, and administrative assistant at Sunrise, 20 years. And if you're watching, thank you so much for your dedicated service to our district. And then finally, thank you again to Kira and the students who came back because they just love us here so much and made it through some interesting Agenda Items. So it's so great to see you guys, so great to see students coming back.
And I have one additional item. I think people are asking what these cards are in front of them. I was, I attended a meeting recently with lawyers, and sitting next to me at the table was the Director of Equity for the Minnesota Department of Corrections, Mr. Kimball's employer. And she showed me these cards that she had, which summarize how to approach different types of conversations with diverse groups. And they have one suggestion, working on diverse teams, working with women, multicultural interactions. And I thought these were very valuable, especially with our district's increased emphasis on equity. And I purchased a set for every member of the board. So when you're in doubt on conversations, whip out your card and get some good helpful suggestions. So. Anything else for Board Forum? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Madam Chair, I move to adjourn.
And I second that. We are adjourned.